May.
Okay.
Stephanie, could you help me get unmuted there? There you go.
Aaron, okay, thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Okay. With that, council agenda before you this evening, we have one matter that requires an additional executive session. Session pursuit, the RCW 423110I to discuss with our legal counsel, legal situation that the city is party to. And that will be added to the additional executive session we have at the end of our meeting this evening. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Motion is second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. And this evening, we have an honor to have Michelle Holt from Benton Franklin Council of Governments with us this evening. Michelle, welcome. And then you're going to share a little bit about Benton Franklin Council of Governments and what kind of services you provide to all of us throughout our region. Michelle, thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mary Gary and council. I hope you'll all go easy on me this evening. You are my very first elected body presentation since joining the COG. So this is an exciting moment for me. I'm going to try and share my screen here.
While you're sharing your screen, I'll let everybody know that we've already broke Michelle in with a person in person meeting we had here a while back. But she's not too scared of us. That's why she chose us first, I'm sure.
That's exactly right. Okay, are you all seeing my my screen? My presentation?
Yes, we have it.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Wow. Here we go. So I'm Michelle Holt. I'm the new executive director for the Benton Franklin Council of Governments. I joined the COG in February of last year, so I've just had my first anniversary with the COG. And I was brought in specifically with some guidance from the Board of Directors to revitalize the organization and bring stability as well as improve the overall understanding of the COG with our members and the value that we're bringing. And so that has really been my focus for the last year as I did a deep dive into the organization to really understand who we are, how we can serve and our relationship with our jurisdictions. And so this is my first opportunity to share some of that information with you all. When I was asking the board at our last meeting, what was the most important information I could share with you? They unanimously said, please just give a good overview of the basics of the COG. It's a fairly complex organization and that was the best thing I can do. So I will apologize for the text heavy slides that we will send to you later for future reference, but there's a lot to cover in 10 minutes. So I'm going to just speed right through. So the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, we were established by a voluntary association in 1966. So we've just finished our 55th year with a vision of providing a forum for improved communication, multi jurisdictional decision making, regional planning, and lead agency capacity for providing multi jurisdictional programs. And the services we provide are outlined in our inter local agreement with our members and they can evolve over time. We currently fulfill several designations on behalf of our region. We are a regional planning commission. We are a conference or council of governments. We are the regional transportation planning organization. Under Washdaw, we are also the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the transportation management area, which is a higher level of service based on population. That's for the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Transit Administration. And then we also serve as an Economic Development District under the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. So what is a council of governments? In a nutshell, we exist to study regional and governmental problems of mutual interest to our member jurisdictions, mutual interest or concern, and then formulate recommendations for review and action by the respective member jurisdiction bodies. So councils of governments are very unique. They reflect their individual regions. So for example, the Council of Governments in Yakima program areas that they have include a homelessness program and a housing authority. Those are not activities that that exist under our COG. The councils of governments that I had opportunity to work in partnership in Idaho, one had a focus that included Veterans Affairs and the Area Office on Aging. Another was very focused on lending for entrepreneurs and jurisdictions. So they really are very unique and different just based on the programs and needs and what their individual councils and jurisdictions find as that shared mutual interest or concern. So in a nutshell, we provide solutions for shared regional problems. So we convene our local governments to collaboratively plan, fund, and administer solutions to shared community needs. That was the most encompassing description we could come up with to describe what it is that we do. So as a regional planning agency, we are we are given the authority to initiate regional planning programs, governance, accept grants and aid, and receive state funding for federal planning and other interests. So that's where are those activities we have under the Metropolitan Planning Organization and the RTPO, the Regional Transportation Planning, Economic Development District. Those designations allow us to do that, do planning and help funnel funds from state and federal programs to our jurisdictions for the betterment of those organizations. So of course, in order to more simply describe this to our members, we came up with the graphic that you see on on our screen that really outlines our areas of focus of transportation, economic development. The marriage of those becomes land use where you have that intersection, no pun intended, of transportation and and growth and development. And then, of course, that local government resources, how can we help with that channeling of technical assistance or funding? So then that allows us to serve those roles as transportation planning, the Economic Development District, and the administrator of multi jurisdictional programs. So under our organization, we split up our activities between regional planning activities and what we're calling local government resources. That's really that technical assistance and funding side. So under regional planning, you see that transportation and land use and our MPO, our TPO. There's just a few of the the planning activities that we cover listed here on the slide. But I sent a handout in your packet that had a much more detailed list of the planning and support services that the COG provides. Most important really become that call for projects which funnels roughly $5 million a year into local local projects and those are distributed through a competitive planning process. So in order to access these funds, jurisdictions have to do that through the MPO. We do produce the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. That's that 20 year plus look at multimodal transportation planning. Projects that aren't listed in that 20 plus year plan aren't eligible for state and federal funding. So it's very important that we work with our jurisdictions to make sure that your plans and and projects are incorporated in that. We're currently updating the MTP right now. The Transportation Improvement Program or TIP, we work with our jurisdictions to make sure that your projects are entered in Washdaw software so that we can again make sure that you are receiving those state and federal pass through funds that you need for your transportation projects. And then the regional transportation priorities, again, that that compiled list that we put together annually for through that competitive process that really ranks the highest priority projects for the region. Travel demand modeling and land use scenarios are some of the services we can provide. We provide assistance for mapping and analysis. And we do have a role in the Growth Management Act certification process where we review our jurisdictions' plans and sign off their transportation elements. So under local government resources, we we as the Economic Development District, we produce every four years, a comprehensive economic development strategy or SEDS. That document is meant to be the backbone for requesting funding, not just from the Economic Development Association. But if we are producing a robust economic viewpoint, that should be a document that any jurisdiction can point to and provide that third party justification for planning and development projects. So that's a very important role that we have since 2009, $2.5 million have funneled into the region through EDA projects. I will say that I believe that there is a lot more opportunity for EDA projects than maybe we've seen jurisdictions take advantage of. So I think there are some opportunities there. We do operate multiple revolving loan funds. Currently, we have about $1 million available for loan to spur economic growth. And over our history, we've lent $16.4 million to 177 small businesses to help spur economic growth and opportunity. The technical funding and assistance work that we're doing is is I would say it's a newer focus for us based on the addition of economic staff we were able to hire with CARES Act funding last year, where we're actively monitoring funding opportunities, serving as the notice of record source for both Senator Murray and Senator Catwell's office to make sure that we're helping to share that information and then just making ourselves available to try and support you as individual jurisdictions as you look at opportunities or programs and how can we help you? That's not something that jurisdictions have historically depended on the COG to do. So this is one of those newer areas of service where we really are trying to make sure that we can help you bridge the gap. There's a lot of information flowing related to funding opportunities. The Economic Development Administration has $3.5 billion available. And of course, the funds that are coming through the IIJA Act, the Investment Infrastructure Act into transportation programs, there's a lot to break down there. So please reach out and lean on us so that we can help as as we're able. We can serve as a lead agency for funding, so that might be a direct grant to the COG or an application we make on behalf of one or more jurisdictions to help them access funds. One such project was a $600,000 competitive grant we received last year for Brownfields assessments and planning. That's open to do assessments of Brownfield properties in Benton and Franklin Counties. And we are just getting started with that effort. So that's a new focus for us. So funding sources. Really quickly, the COG receives revenue from roughly, I have four here on the list, but funding sources include consistent program funding. So that is our federal funding through our transportation programs, our state Washdaw funding and the economic development grant we have to put on the SEDS. Single opportunity grants, contracted services and and local funds. You can see in 2021, up in the right corner here, that our total revenue was almost $1.3 million. Just under 20% of that came from local funds, direct from our jurisdictions. That's our annual assessment. And then almost 80% of our funding came directly through those those federal and state programs. So single opportunity grants, again, as I mentioned, that might be a direct grant award to the COG. For example, in 2020, we received $400,000 to do economic resiliency planning and support services that allowed us to hire our economic recovery coordinator position. This funding runs out in June of 2021, so I have made a request to both Benton and Franklin Counties for ARPA funds that would allow us to continue that role for another two years. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that's going to allow us to keep that level of staff support. And then again, the lead agency grant example with the Brownfields, the COG applied for that funding on behalf of the cities of Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland that made funds available. It will actually produce Brownfield assessments and planning opportunities for the entirety, well, for properties located in all of Benton or Franklin Counties. So it's not limited to those three cities. They just happen to be the coalition that applied for the original grant. So again, those are new activities for us. And then contracted services, we can contract to provide administrative support. We do that currently for the Benton County Public Facilities District and the Tri-City Regional Public Facilities District. Those are not huge revenue generators for us. There's basically minimal net net return on that, but it is a service that we can provide to much smaller entities. So the the last thing I have for you is just local funding. And this is the one that seems to be the most of most interest to our members. What are we paying for and what are we getting for that money? So local funds as part of the inter local agreement, the member jurisdictions agree to fund the COG operations. Local funds are required to balance our organizational budget beyond any other forms of funding that have been applied. So for 2022, that funding total for our budget is $260,774. And how that breaks out right now is that our federal transportation programs require a 13.5% local match. The Washdaw RTPO programs don't have a local match, so. And those are also required to be spent annually. So we always extend those dollars first. Our SEDS planning grant through the EDA, it's 100% match. So it's $75,000 a year that that gets paid in by our jurisdiction members through the through the dues process. And $75,000 a year comes from EDA and that funds a full time position doing that economic development planning for us. Currently, no other programs we have require a local match. So for example, that Brownfields program, zero match for that. The COVID relief funding, zero match for that. So we we are always happy to see that. But one important note about local funds and and that is that over the history of the of the COG, they've limited their annual dues request to only what was required for those federal federal funds matching. And then when there was a shortfall or an opportunity where funds needed to be expended, the COG covered that under their reserve funds. And they've been very hesitant to come back to the jurisdictions and ask for money beyond the the local match. Unfortunately, that has created a situation where the COG's reserve funds are nearly depleted. So that's something we are going to have have to have an ongoing conversation about is depending on the level of service and support that you as jurisdictions may want or need from us as the COG, there may have to be a conversation about what that costs beyond what we're able to recoup in our overhead billing against those federal programs. So I just want to put that out there so that you're aware and as that may be an ongoing conversation that we have. So with that, do you have any questions? I know that was a lot.
Thanks, Michelle. Much appreciated. Yeah, great presentation. Yeah, ton of information there. So I'll I'll open it up to any council members may have any questions and Michelle or Roscoe, any comment to what the COG brings to the city. I know we we use a lot of the projects and opportunities they have. So anybody or Roscoe? I see Mayor Protem Brink.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Holt, for the presentation. Very informative and I appreciate all you've done in your relatively short tenure there at BF COG. As I slowly get involved as a council member Moran's alternate to the BF COG meetings. Just two quick questions. Could you tell me what you see as the number one issue or challenge with regard to the regional planning that you're undertaking? Can you summarize that briefly?
Based on what I've seen over the last year, I think it really is the relationship that the COG has had with the jurisdictions to really be able to do a better job of embracing that that role of regional planning. We have transportation planners that are that are good at what they do. But it's really our role to balance that that vision between what each jurisdiction needs specifically and that larger regional picture, understanding that as a significantly commuting region, everyone's transportation planning impacts everyone else. Whether that's that commute from work to home, that sort of thing. But in order for us to improve that level of planning we're doing in relationship with the jurisdictions, we have to have a better, more open conversation. I think in transportation, that has been good. I think it can be better. On the economic development side, I think that we were just understaffed to a point that there wasn't a whole lot we could do. And we're starting to see that change.
Okay, thank you for your insight on that. And just one last question. You mentioned the reserve fund is almost depleted. Do you happen to know historically what that reserve fund was funded at? You know, what was the high point?
I can't tell you what the high point was, but the last high that I saw before it started really being drawn drawn down was about $250,000. Which again, is, you know, not a significant backlog or security blanket when you look at month to month costs. But right now, that reserve fund is sitting at about $20,000. Which doesn't really, if you think about a potential federal shutdown, for example, where you might go a couple two months in a backlog of billing against those federal programs, we wouldn't have funding to pay payroll. And there have been opportunities in the year prior to my my coming and my first months onboard where we weren't sure we were going to be able to cover payroll because of cash flow.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. And I I look forward to continuing to work with you and Councilmember Moran with BF COG. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Blue?
Well, welcome. I'm a new face. I will I will also be seeing you on BF COG because I will be the face of Benton Franklin Transit on the COG. Until we get a new manager, general manager. So I look forward to seeing you. I guess the question I have is you said something about the 5303 funds that you that that's probably transit funds. Is that just to read our documents into your documents?
Yes, so we have a tri-party agreement with Benton Franklin Transit to provide planning services beyond what is the capacity of Benton Franklin Transit specifically. And so that's what that funding is for.
Okay. And that's that's with FTA and then Franklin Transit.
Yes.
Just curious. The other the other question I have is you were starting your Brownfields program. Many years ago, I tried to get one started. But it nobody seemed to be very interested. So what do you envision it being offered up under the COG or offered up via the cities or?
So.
Or?
Yeah, so how this how this grant and program are set up right now is that it's provided a pot of funding that can actually pay for and and conduct a phase one, phase two environmental site specific or area wide planning. And so we're going about that. It doesn't, it is does not require to be run through through any of the jurisdictions specifically. So a private property owner could nominate a property and if it met the criteria that the coalition has set up for issuing those funds, then we could do the assessment on that property.
So you would see the the possibility of BF COG actually facilitating that that grant?
Yes, so part of that grant is that we did procure the Environmental Engineering Agency that is doing the planning and the assessments under the COG, yes.
Well, I mean, because one of the again, Benton Franklin Transit was looking at trying to acquire property over in in Pasco. And they chased away from a lot of properties because of potential brownfield issues.
So in that particular case, and that's the message that we're trying to get out to the jurisdictions now is that if you have a property or a project that is being hindered because of a brownfield situation, this this program could go in and do that initial assessment at no cost to the city. The other thing is that with the with the IIJA fund date, federal funding, they added a significant amount of funding to the Brownfields program under EPA. And this grant is renewable. So once we've used those funds, we can go back and and request an additional grant and add funds to that program. So as long as there's need and we have properties and we're using the funds, we can continue to do that.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Yes, Ms. Holt, thank you for your presentation. I was curious, you talked about local funding. How many how many staff or paid full time staff are on the Benton Franklin Council of Governments? How big is this organization?
So right now, we have nine full time staff. The majority of my position and our office manager are paid out of overhead or overhead recapture funds and so the local funds as part of the match pay for pay for that. All of the rest of the staff are funded as direct employees under one federal program or another.
Excellent. Okay. And so the other question I had was on, you said you have traffic. Maybe traffic engineers or planners? Do you have engineers working for you that do traffic studies?
We have, we have four transportation planners, so their backgrounds are in in planning and land use and transportation. And then we contract out for the technical engineering portions.
Okay. All right. And then how do you decide which projects to tackle? Or do you, I take it folks like Roscoe come to you and talk about what they plan to do with their city? And then you facilitate, I'm envisioning that you then facilitate a conversation with other cities that are adjacent. Or how does this work? How do you decide what to spend your time on when it comes to transportation planning?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the caveat of I am not a transportation planner, nor do I have any transportation background. So I can only answer this very 30,000 foot level, but I know Roscoe as a member of our Transportation Advisory Committee is intimately involved in in this process. But there are specific planning elements that we are required to do under our federal programs. And then when it comes to the the call for projects and the ranking of transportation priorities, that is a process that the COG facilitates with the Technical Advisory Council or the Transportation Council to work through that process. So those representatives on the TAC are the ones that are actually ranking the projects that have been submitted to determine where they end up in the list for that call for projects. Roscoe, did I explain that? Oh, all right.
Yeah, they do. They do quite a bit, John. And so your question on their budget and their work plan, that's reviewed at the TAC level, the Technical Advisory Committee. And that recommendation goes to the board. So you've got all these agencies basically outlining the work plan. And so a good example is they're doing, helping us with some modeling with the Lewis and Clark Ranch. So some of that's going on with assistance from the COG. So but it's it's all the members are putting together and approving or recommending to the board the work plan.
Okay, with the with the Vane Geeson improvements in the future, be a consideration? Not to get too far off track there, just. Not to get too far off track here, just, just wondering if that's the right class of, of projects?
Well, I, I guess if you're asking for modeling assist, uh, assistance, that, that's what we're getting through the Cog. Call for projects, yeah, that, those type of projects go through and get ranked and, and scored um, at the, at the TAC level. Um, and it's, it's scored by your peers. So I'm presenting to other public works directors. So it's, it's the people at the technical level uh, that score these. And then those are recommendations that again, go to the board uh, to confirm any uh, selection of federal funds for projects. And it's, it's a pretty good, fair method um, as far as scoring in that, because you've got your peers that are familiar with the, with the, with the area uh, when they're scoring these projects.
And then the board votes on this, are these recommendations?
That, that is correct.
And, and does each city have equal representation or how does that work?
Yes, every member, every member jurisdiction has a primary and an alternate board member. And so they each have one vote at the table.
Well, great, thank you. I just appreciate that and I really got to dig into the structure, so I appreciate that answer. Go ahead.
And yeah, that uh, that gives opportunity for, for Councilmember Moran or Roscoe to work together to make sure that when she's representing the city, she's representing the city based on the best interests of our community as, as well. Uh, because she's not as into the weeds as Roscoe and his team and peers are. So uh, with that, I'll let Kate close it out this evening, so Councilmember Rand.
Thank you, uh, and thank you very much, Michelle, for being here. Appreciate you uh, for explaining all of this out. And I'm curious, I didn't notice, this slide saying uh, the information that I was really hoping everybody else is in. Uh, something that some people focus on is the monetary value. So I'm curious, do you happen to have the numbers in front of you or an approximation of them in regards to the money that we put into the Cog? And then the value ultimately that we are able to get out of the Cog as just West Richland?
That is a wonderful, wonderful question. And yes, that information is in your packet in the letter that I sent out originally. But your dues assessment this year was nine thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. That makes up three point seven percent of the overall local funding uh, that goes into um, uh, to the Cog. So your total investment in the Cog since nineteen ninety-seven uh, has been three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. And your five-year return on investment, so actual direct funding either through EDA or transportation um, for the last five years, uh, basically is a thirty-four dollar return on, uh, for every dollar that you invested in the Cog for the last five years. So we, we have tried be a very.
I know that for me, that is. Go ahead, sorry.
Um, I was just gonna say that it um, uh, we have, have been a very lean and efficient organization. Uh, I feel like there's a lot more uh, that we could potentially do for our jurisdictions. But that will have to be a conversation about what is it that you have that shared need for? And what's the Cog's capacity uh, to help support those things? Or what are jurisdictions willing to spend money on uh, in order to um, share those programs?
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we could highlight that, because what is that I really enjoy being a part of BF Cog for is that I know that we get a lot of value you out of, out of being, participating with it. So, thank you very much.
Hey, Michelle, again, thank you for uh, joining us this evening. Great information and uh, look forward to uh, many more years of uh, working with the Cog and yourself and staff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, Council, with that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening. Uh, which should include the approved minutes of the regular meeting on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. A motion authorizing the mayor to execute amendment one to on-call professional services agreement with J U B. And a motion authorizing the mayor to execute professional services contract with Canute's Engineering for the Belmont Business District frontage improvements. Ordinance oh-three-twenty-two, amending the West Richland Municipal Code twelve, twelve oh twenty. And oh, what, forty park regulation and use and reservation policy. Resolution twelve-twenty-two, setting a public hearing for easement vacation, double oh two, twenty twenty. And resolution thirteen-twenty-two, setting a public hearing for easement vacation, oh-three-twenty, double oh three, twenty twenty. And if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening, please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. I see no one, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Okay, perfect. With that, Council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Looks like we have someone that did raise their hand.
Okay, so that is, I believe, Sophia, if you would uh, state your name and place of residence for the record and anything you have to address on the consent agenda this evening, please do so. So, or Stephanie, can you unmute her? There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so this is first, my name is Diana Elizabeth Cobb. Uh, Sophia is my niece. I think I'm a little premature because it's in regards to your agenda item. Um, ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings.
Okay, yeah, you're, you're, you're one, you're one step ahead of us here. So when we get to that point, when I ask the audience if they'd like to comment on a said agenda item, uh, that'll be your opportunity.
Yeah, we're trying to figure this out because so many people, my neighbors and affected people have not been able to figure out to get on.
We took us a little practice, a couple of years, we got it figured out. All right, perfect, we'll, we'll get you next here. Okay, so Council, uh, had, Adam, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Propose like sign, motion carries unanimous, thank you, Council. And this is the first opportunity for citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. And if you'd wish to provide any comments for those items not on the agenda this evening, uh, if it's on your mind, please uh, go ahead and raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone and you'll be recognized opportunity to address Council. I see no one, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Ordinance oh-four-twenty-two, uh, item eight A is a amendment to the West Richland Municipal Code uh, to allow drive-through window service as a permitted use in the CL and CN zones. And with that, I will let Eric make his staff report this evening. Eric?
You always have to make that error to not unmute yourself before you get started. We swap every so often, so there you go. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Just want to correct you, Mayor, real quick on that introduction. It's for, to allow a drive-through window businesses, uh, restaurants as a conditional use, not a permitted.
Got a typo on my agenda, my apologies.
No worries. Uh, so this evening, uh, that you have before you a zoning code text amendment that was applied for by a property owner to allow drive-through restaurants in the commercial limited and commercial neighborhood districts. Prior to the property owner submitting the application, the history of the land use matrix was shared with him on how drive-through restaurants were removed uh, last year when that uh, ordinance went before Council. Um, and it, it was removed at the last moment. These, uh, they submitted the application anyway and hoped that they would be able to see a change. Uh, staff took the application before the Council CD Subcommittee explained the proposal was there, that the recommendation from the Subcommittee was made to allow this as a conditional use, which would allow for public comment and address potential impacts of a drive-through restaurant, which are similar to the banks with drive-throughs that are permitted outright in the condition, in the commercial limited and commercial neighborhood districts. Council wanted to, to allow the public to be able to voice their concerns and specifically have the noise impacts addressed. The change to allow as a conditional use uh, for these facilities was discussed and um, would require that the neighbors be mailed notice as a conditional use permit as a type-three application. Staff changed the proposed text to allow the use as a conditional use and added some language for the performance standards that would minimize noise and which includes some items such as a masonry wall, vegetation, and that noise levels cannot exceed the standards set forth in the code. SEPA was issued on December twentieth, twenty twenty-one, and the details of the text amendment were included in the SEPA checklist and packet. Staff took the proposal to the Planning Commission for processing, advertised the public hearing per West Richland Municipal Code fourteen dot oh-three dot oh-three oh, B four as a type-seven application and received no public comments. During the public hearing, the Planning Commission provided the detail, was provided the detailed background of the land use matrix change that the Council made last year and the current proposal. At the February tenth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting, the commission proceeded forward to recommend Council to adopt the proposed text amendment and believed that our city should be promoting more restaurants to be located here. While I understand that prior councils have made promises to the neighbors, this isn't a promise that would bind current or future councils. The proposed text amendment before you this evening already held a public hearing before the Planning Commission. Therefore, there isn't a public hearing to men. The action is up for discussion and decision for Council. Their property owner proposing the text amendment isn't the property owner at the corner of bombing range in Kennedy, but owns property in the commercial limited district down the street. To address the letter you received prior to the meeting, remanding the application back to the Planning Commission would require Council to provide direction to the Planning Commission due to new information that wasn't available at the time with the public hearing. Staff followed the legal process to advertise and hold a public hearing, requiring mailing for a text amendment is misinformation and would not be consistent with the code. West Richland Municipal Code fourteen dot oh-three dot oh-one oh requires mailed notification for types three, four and six applications. As already stated, text amendments are type-seven applications. Staff believes that the proposed text amendment takes into account the concerns of the neighborhood, would address concerns of this uh, Council CD Subcommittee, meet the intent of the commercial limited and neighborhood districts and be consistent with similar uses allowed outright in those zones.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Anything else?
That is, that concludes my staff report, Ed, Mayor.
So the, the, but the, the public or the conditional use permit process will allow a public comment period during that CPU, CUP process?
Okay, absolutely.
I just want to make that very clear. Okay, uh, with that, uh, if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item, go ahead and please raise your hand or star nine by phone. And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't write your name down the first time, Sophia. So this is, this is not Sophia's phone, but it's, it's the mother-in-law or something of that nature. So we'll go ahead and uh, unmute you and state your name and place of residence for the record, please.
Okay, do you hear me now?
Yes, we have you, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Mrs. Diana Elizabeth Cobb. I live at forty-three-twenty Kennedy Road. And um, I did send an email and a proposed ordinance. Um, about five pages, did each and every one of you, including the mayor, receive that?
Stephanie did, yes.
Has anybody had the opportunity to review my request?
Yeah, this is an opportunity for your public comment, not a dialogue between Council at this time, ma'am.
Okay, well, essentially, um, what I proposed and what I communicated was, in fact, necessary because none of my member, my, uh, my neighbors, myself, or anybody affected ever received written notification about any of it as far back as October twenty twenty-one. So I think it's prudent that you all at least have the courtesy to accept what I have stated in my five-page document, not to mention sending this proposal back to uh, the Planning Commission and re-sending all the notifications of the written notification to all the neighbors that are at, that are affected by this, because we were never included.
Okay, all right.
I know you, I know that this is just for comments, but it's my only opportunity because everybody has rushed this through and never communicated. But yet there's a long history as far back as two thousand and seven, when there was, and there was an open forum with walk-ins and people that were affected. Uh, I did, I'm sure you're all familiar with the petitions, about twenty-nine, thirty people. And um, uh, nobody was notified this time. It was only by chance that um, I got wind of it and I started researching, I started writing. And as far as I'm concerned, we really have a problem with the lack of communication for those that are adversely affected. So I'm really taking this opportunity to request that uh, this really be considered and looked at, not just rushed through and signed and approved, because it's not gonna stop here.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Is that it? I only get, I only get three minutes?
It is correct, yes.
Okay, did this fall on deaf ears or is just a mere formality to push this and approve it?
As we go through.
Have the mayor sign off?
As we go through the process, ma'am, you'll, you'll find that there'll be a discussion amongst Council on this agenda item as we proceed. Okay, anyone else? I see Rick Simon. You unmute Rick, please, Stephanie?
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, um, thank, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rick Simon. I'm speaking on behalf of Tim Bush, who is the applicant for this text amendment. And uh, um, for the record, uh, my address, nine-eight-four-oh-two North Arrington Road. Um, so this uh, this proposal is really intended to uh, help achieve some additional economic development for the city, adding uh, the potential for commercial businesses that have drive-throughs. Uh, expands the um, the variety of commercial businesses that could locate within a, within uh, CL zoning district. Um, there is no specific pro- proposal uh, for uh, such a use at this point in time. It just establishes a process in the future if a developer comes along and wants to propose something. The, the provisions of the code um, include, as, as Eric has pointed out, a conditional use permit process. At that point in time, the developer will have a specific plan that he presents for public review and the neighbors will receive written notice. Uh, there are standards in place that regulate noise, that talk about uh, fencing and buffering. So it, it seems to me to be a very reasonable uh, quote amendment and uh, one that I would hope that the Council supports. So uh, unless, uh, unless there are questions for me, that would uh, conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, I much appreciate it. Anyone else this evening? Okay, I see no one else, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone else, no, thank you.
Council, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Council, uh, I move the Council approve ordinance four-twenty-two, which amends chapters seventeen point thirteen, seventeen point forty and seventeen point forty-six to allow drive-through windows to conditional use in commercial limited zones.
Motion, I have a second.
Is, did, did you say the whole thing there, Richard?
No, I didn't on purpose.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure you were saying what you meant.
Okay, I just want to make sure you were saying what you meant.
Get a a motion and that wasn't the entire motion?
Oh, that was my motion that I.
Okay, so he changed the motion and it's not the original motion as recommended by. Staff, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, I seconded exactly as Councilmember Bloom.
Okay, motion to second council. Questions of staff amongst yourselves, conversation? Councilmember Bloom?
Yes, as I read the Cepa and as I read the application and as I read the testimony of. Mister Simon, the request for a text amendment was applicable to commercial limited only. The Cepa application was commercial limited only. The advertisement in the. Meeting of the planning commission, I will assume was commercial limited only. If you read through the entire packet materials, it keeps referring to commercial limited only. I don't know when neighborhood commercial was added to the change. And that's why I excluded it. We do not have any Cepa coverage for a change to neighborhood commercial. And I pointed this out previously in my emails. That I have no objection to the change to commercial limited. But the entire and and we've had this discussion in council before, but we've had many different councils. The entire difference was between neighborhood commercial and commercial limited. Was a neighborhood commercial was to. Facilitate. Members in the neighborhood. A drive-through was excluded because it wasn't a neighborhood activity. It was a passing crowd activity. So it doesn't meet the difference. So that's my comment. My question comes back to is. That's why I voted, I put the one proposal up. Thank you.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Yeah, I I, as I was reading it, I same thing and then in reading the email that. That we had all received from what councilmember Bloom and what Mr. Mendenhall had discussed that. Has pretty much put me in a similar position because if I remember correctly, just what councilmember Bloom was stating is that the only real difference between. And it might be the only difference between. Neighborhood commercial and limited commercial was not allowing for the drive-through. Is that correct? I I believe it's correct.
Breaking up on me Kate, can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Go ahead and drop.
Sorry, I just wanted to know.
And then ask the question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to know. It sounded as if the the main difference I was just for any more larger differences between. The commercial limited and commercial neighborhood. Cause it sounded as if commercial neighborhood was specifically created for this purpose.
I I wasn't here when commercial neighborhood was created. We do have really. Very small area in the city if you discount the commercial neighborhood that's out on the ranch. So there's effectively five parcels. You've got the large one out on the ranch north of Rupert Road is just huge. You've got parcel that the church on Kennedy that just was built last year. Resides on a neighborhood commercial piece. There's the vacant piece on the corner of Kennedy and bombing range. And then as you go north on bombing range where that new, I want to call it a senior housing development is built. There's two pads out front there.
Right.
Those those two are also neighborhood commercial. Those are the basically the all five parcels as of today. That are neighborhood commercial.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. So then I guess the next thing I'm wondering is I noticed that it said. This is the second discussion of this. Is that the second discussion that? Is for council to discuss this or is this because I don't recall us discussing this prior at city council level.
No, sorry, no, that that must been miss mistype or something on there. So the planning commission reviewed it twice. They had. Initial meeting, I took it to the CD subcommittee because. The history I know, you know, Mr. Glenn, this isn't the first time he's brought this up and the in the history behind it. So I wanted just to share this and make sure that I wasn't moving forward with something that was going to get the brakes put on. So I took it to the planning commission. It may have been there that the neighborhood commercial was added to the the matrix or to have it be allowed. And then I also took it to the CD subcommittee because I wanted to make sure I got at least those three. Council members that would be supporting the change. So I I did that, took it there, received. Recommendation to move forward and out of those two meetings, we it went from being allowed outright permitted use. To a conditional use again so that the noise could be addressed. We added the performance standards that required the masonry wall. There's a ten foot landscaping requirement between residential and commercial. So there'd be also a ten foot landscape between this whatever. And and again, there is no proposal for the property there corner of Kennedy and bombing range. This is just to allow for it. So anywhere where there would be a drive-through, you'd have a masonry wall, ten foot landscaping between that and residential.
Right, thank you. Okay, so then just to be clear, this is the first discussion and that's what. Got it. So this will come back again for a second discussion of council.
It doesn't need to. There's a motion on the floor of council.
No, it only gets one discussion. Okay. Gotcha. Okay, just want to make sure I'm following. Um, so another question I have is I. Was looking through my emails and I did not see an email that was from Ms. Miss or Mrs. David Cobb. Is that something that was sent to our emails? Is that maybe I'm missing it in the packet somewhere?
I emailed that to all of the council this morning with Mister Bloom's email exchange that I had with him. It was a attached email that was in that email. So I attached her email to my.
Oh, I didn't see the attachment in there. Okay. I did not see that as an attachment. I apologize. Um, okay. All right. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Councilmember Smart?
Uh, yeah, council, um, Mr. Mayor, I I also didn't see that attachment, so I was sitting here scratching my head, wondering where was that email this way you talked about. Miss Cobb, so. Yeah, I would like to review that, but but honestly. The there's two, there's kind of two issues now that are brought up. Just to try to make some sense out of this. One is whether or not both. Commercial limited and commercial neighborhood should be included in this in this text amendment. And and then back to the root issue is should, you know, should drive-throughs be allowed? In in a location that might be in close proximity to a residential neighborhood, which is the concern that we all expressed. Years ago and and then again recently, just like Eric talked about. You know, I, as a matter of fact, I was one of the people that didn't want our neighbors to be. Badly impacted by by loudspeakers at drive-throughs, so. But I I guess I'm I've I've gained assurance through this conditional use permit process. And some of the recommendations that I guess standards that are being applied. I'm not entirely. Thrilled with the idea of just limiting the noise to, you know, the decibel level that's allowed. I I my hope is that that the planning department and whoever else is. Watching these conditional use permits if they do pop up in the future. By the way, I know this isn't one right now, but. Is is that really the combination of masonry wall, which maybe eight feet instead of six if necessary or ten instead of six. And then in addition to some shrubbery or other noise absorbent material is really designed. Not just to meet minimum standards, but to really not impact the neighbors who might have a backyard fence. Adjacent to property of this nature. So I mean, that's 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 the intent that I want to see pursued. I guess I I'm not a hundred percent convinced that the text we have in there actually does that now. But I think that the intent is there. I mean, maybe Eric, you can address this. I mean, you tell me, is what I just described going to happen? And and will those mitigating efforts be that effective? Can they be that effective and will they be enforced that way when when an applicant in the future comes to? To pursue a drive-through in a location where there's a residential. Housing development. Thank you. Let you answer that.
Yep, be happy to answer that for you, Mr. Smart. So. I've gone out and done noise tests. I've got this little machine that you go out there, it's got a microphone on it and you go out and you calibrate it, then you. Take the calibration off and you stand there in the in the open and you get noise readings. I've gone out there for the racetrack. I've gone for other locations as well. And what you typically find is that the ambient noise far exceeds what the noise. Level standards that we have adopted for code are set now. So especially when you're on busy streets, I've been on Keen Road where the decibel level is reading over eighty five decibels. Every time cars would drive by and ramp it up. And so with. With that, you know, you've got a fairly busy road there with bombing range. We're seeing more traffic. We're going to be, you know, adding that. New intersection because we're seeing more traffic going through this area. With Badger Mountain South continuing to add more traffic there, you're going to see more ambient noise in that area. And it's going to probably be around eighty to eighty five decibels because of the the cars just driving by. I've I've been to restaurants that have drive-throughs. I wouldn't believe that at the property line that they're able to. Turn those down. They're not like the nineteen sixties anymore where you you've got the lady that's, you know, screaming in the background and it's a really loud microphone. You're able to have higher, better technologies today than you had in the past. If you look at, for instance, I'll just give you an example too of some of the changes that are being made. The coffee shop there, the old roasters, like can't remember the black something or other. Whatever the new name is for roasters, but you've got that roaster store on Kennedy and Keen. And their their people are out, if they're not taking the order at the window, their people are out. With their phones or whatever, however they place the order and they're going to the window of the people talking to them. So there's a definitely decreased. Opportunity for that noise to leave the site when they're just having that face-to-face conversation. So there's ways that you can do these drive-throughs. To make it work. And I believe that our our noise, like I said, I believe that the noise ratings that we have would really. Default to the background decibels.
So I I want to follow up with that. I appreciate that explanation. Um, did we receive any? Excuse me, we receive any comments from residents who actually I have property adjacent to. A commercial limited or commercial neighborhood zone property.
For the public hearing, we received no comments. We didn't receive a comment today from. And I have to pull up the email, sorry. Sophia's got me mixed up now. On there to apologize. Mrs. Cobb, so. And Mrs. Cobb is not directly adjacent to the property. They're two parcels away. So there'd be a there's a house in between them and and the neighborhood.
Right. And that and that property currently. Is is just is not a it's not a commercial neighborhood limited, is that right?
So there's. There's a there's neighbor commercial neighborhood there at the corner of bombing range. That's the northwest corner of that intersection. You also have neighborhood or commercial neighborhood at the northeast corner. Then you have commercial general across the street.
Oh, right, okay.
There's all that vacant land associated with the church there that was going to be Albertson's or the Yokes location. That's all that's all zone general or commercial general. A kitty corner for the, well, then across the street from there, both on the south side. Where the gas station is and the mini storage and the strip mall. That's all commercial general as well.
So did you have, now this is, this proposal was made by. Mister Bush evidently and his associates. What was there any discussion with them about? The type of drive-through because you know, there is a there's a big difference between a drive-through like they have at coffee shop where they walk up and take your order. Person to person versus one that has a a speaker. Is there any differentiation? That that we could make for the for the commercial neighborhood properties where you could allow a drive-through, but you you don't allow a loudspeaker? Is that was that ever discussed in the planning commission? Is that possible?
No, that was discussed the, you know, as as Mister Simon said, is that they don't even have anyone on online right now. They just wanted to put that out there so there's more opportunities for the sale of the property that they have, which is down the road. But to be able to provide that opportunity to allow for that to be there as part of a future sale.
One other question I had was when this notification came came out. Did I take it and I I could just go back and reread it, but you can answer ease more easily. Who did the notices go out to? Did they actually go out to the all of the residential parcels that surround commercial limited?
As I stated, this is a type seven application, so pending mailed notification out. Is not compliant with the code at all. That would not be something that we do. We don't, we've never done it before on a text amendment. If it's if it would be allowed as a conditional use permit, that is a type three application and therefore. Notification when they if and when they ever submitted something would then go out to the neighbors and let them know that, hey. This is a proposed use of this location and they'd be able to see what that application entailed. Be able to provide public comment, be able to participate in that process.
But if the applicant meets all of the conditions that are set in the text, then it's really just an informational thing. It's not like they can stop. A development based on the. Desire not.
Any other commercial user could be located there and be able to generate the same level of noise. So long as they didn't exceed the noise background decibel rate.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to mention. You know, somebody could. To make it put a motorcycle shop in six Harleys, you know, and not in the commercial neighborhood, but. In the commercial limited? No, maybe not. Okay.
I don't know. I'd have to look at the land use matrix. I would want to make that assumption right away.
Yeah, I don't like getting into that, but okay, I just I guess. All right, I I need to, I'll I'll be quiet and listen to other people's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smart. I see Mayor Pro Tim Gray.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify a few things. So the motion as presented. Applies to a text amendment change only affecting commercial limited. So if we proceed down that road. There will be no change to neighborhood commercial. So as neighborhood commercial lots develop. Would be absolutely no provision, even if the neighbors wanted them to allow drive-throughs, you know, for their convenience. Is that correct?
Eric? Yes, there there would be, they would not be allowed to build a drive-through restaurant there because there would there wouldn't be allowed in that zone.
Even if the neighborhood supported it. Okay.
Yes.
So we're proposing a text amendment change or we're considering it. To allow conditional use and conditional use allows by its very nature. allows the public to comment when a specific uh variance or a specific application for that conditional use is proposed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure why there is prolonged debate about this topic. Uh, because all we are doing is allowing greater public comment on the use of drive-throughs and commercial limited and unfortunately now not commercial uh neighborhood zones. So the bottom line is I support this and I suggest that we move on.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, right? Councilmember Bloom?
Uh, I just want to clarify, uh, just a statement that Mr. Menon Hall had made. So no notice was given, no SEPA was given to propose the change to neighborhood commercial. Is that accurate?
No, because the text was included in the SEPA notification that went out.
The SEPA, the SEPA?
Again, as I stated in my email to you, Mr. Bloom, I'm the SEPA responsible official, so I get to review those things to verify. I reviewed it. We have issued a SEPA decision that included this to include the neighborhood commercial. And you're able to make some minor changes along the way through the SEPA process.
Well, no, the, the SEPA determination you have specifically says commercial limited.
The, the front document, you're correct, but there's more to it than just that, Mr. Bloom. There's a whole packet that we send out with all of the information for people to review and comment on.
Right, but Mr. Bush's, Mrs. Bush's application was for commercial limited?
Yep.
And you, you said you did the SEPA prior to the, prior to the uh planning commission. We didn't get the planning commission information. And you, you weren't certain when commercial, neighborhood commercial was added?
So there are ways that you can change things along the way and not need to go out and re-notify everybody about the SEPA decision. Especially if you don't get any comments on it in the first place. The decision wouldn't change either way. So I would still issue a determination of non-significance and the same people that were notified before would be notified today. So there would be no change in this at all.
It's a method of notification.
Um, no, it's not a method of notification. It's the same notification process. It's a type seven application. There's no mailing involved here. That's misinformation.
Let me clarify something with Mr. Brink said. With a conditional use permit, if the conditions are met, much like with the dog kennel issue several years ago, if the conditions are met, you must, uh, must approve the, the application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Currently, if, if a individual wished to on a, uh, today on a neighborhood commercial, if they wanted to put in a drive-through restaurant, would a waiver request be a, available to that individual?
If they wanted to today, just with, with it not being allowed because council hasn't taken action yet, right? If they wanted to come in today with a restaurant with a drive-through window on it, I would have to say it's not allowed. You can do your restaurant, but you can't do the drive-through window. There's no waivers allowed.
Request a waiver, correct?
A text amendment, not a waiver.
Okay. All right, Councilman Stoker?
Yes, so I guess a couple of other points. Um, I scrolled through the matrix here of different uses for the different zones. So I'm just, uh, for some clarification, banks, including ATMs is included? Does that include a drive-through window already?
Yes, it does.
So for banks, we've already got drive-throughs for commercial neighborhood.
Yes, there could be a bank there with a drive-through. Yep.
Okay. Um, we have fire stations. Those can be loud at times. Middle of the night, call comes in, sirens go off, right?
Yep.
Okay, there's convenience stores. Those can be pretty loud. City parks can get noisy at times too, so, um, I understand, but it seems that we've already got one instance where drive-throughs are allowed. Um, and that's banks.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stoker. Uh, Councilman Smart?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to um reiterate that point that um that it's true that if it's a conditional use permit, um, that that it still will be permitted if the conditions are met. And it sounds like the conditions have been written so that they will likely easily be met. Um, well, easily with the mitigating um uh engineering. And so I, I, I think it's uh, the, so I've been looking at the, at the map more carefully to see which properties have this commercial neighborhood uh zoning, which I know Eric described briefly, but it's, it's, it was hard for me to envision those without seeing them on a color map that I can discern the colors on, which is not the map I have on my wall because it's fading and all the salmon color things look the same. So um, I'm at the, I'm at the website uh, which is I guess one of the great benefits of having these remote meetings because I can look at Google Earth and the, and the full color city zoning map in real time. Um, and I'm seeing the, you know, where, where these properties really are. Um, I, I don't know. I, uh, there are um homes, you know, next to these commercial neighborhood zones parcels. Um, there's also obviously homes next to the commercial limited parcels, um. But I know that we've had conversation with um the residents in one of those areas at least, uh, and heard no concerns. Um, I guess what I'm concerned about is that we haven't had conversation with the residents who are established um around the, let's see, can you, let's, I, I'm having a hard time reconciling my zone map with my Google Earth. Um, is the, is the, and plus the zone map, by the way, doesn't have street names on it. So I think I'm looking at the, I'm thinking I'm looking at the um, at the Catholic Medical Property. Is that what that, the big commercial? Uh, no, that's not it. Okay, so I've got the wrong location. Never mind. Oh, that's the, that's the property where the church was just built. Yes, yes, Richard, change, so thank you, Richard. And then there's three other properties east of that. Are they currently? Is that right? Are those currently being?
East of what? East of what? So just the church property is own neighborhood commerce, or commercial neighborhood. And then the property directly to the west of that, the vacant piece, is owned commercial neighborhood. So the fact you're looking at just this area where we're having Mrs. Cobb talk to, those are the only two properties. You've got one that's already built on. It's got a church on it.
Yeah.
And then there's the vacant piece there on the northwest corner that is, is vacant and it's also zone. I'd also point out that you have um a bank, drive-through bank, right up against residential at the intersection of Paradise and, and Bombing Range. And the drive-through part, portion of that is up against the residential users and I have never heard a complaint from any of them.
No, I know. It's, it's a little sad though, because when I go through that drive-through, I'm looking right into the back window of their house and it's always kind of weird that they didn't, that some trees haven't been put up. Um, let me.
That's why, that's why I want the ten-foot vegetation in the basement.
Yeah, but let me go back. So what is the property? So if I go from um from Kennedy, corner of Kennedy and Bombing Range, uh, north, uh, that's where the traffic circle is and then the commercial limited, that's the, uh, that's the Catholic property, right? For the medical center? No, it's not. Yes, it is.
Yeah, commercial limited is the Catholic property.
Thank you. And, and is all of that property currently developed or is there, or is that property not yet developed in places?
Nope. Now there's some vacant land there.
So, so those, those parcels would be parcels that I would be curious to know the opinion of the folks that have the adjacent wall. Just saying, um, you know, because they'll be impacted by this decision. I'm just boiling this down to reality of where we have with adjacent neighbors. Uh, all of the stuff out north of us is kind of irrelevant because it hasn't been developed yet. So people that build there already know they're building next to commercial limited. Um, and then I'm also looking at the, the commercial neighborhood on Bombing Range, those two parcels you mentioned, uh, right next to the multifamily. So I, I, I'm a, I'm kind of liking the proposal as Mr. Bloom, uh, stated it, um. And with, with the exception of wondering what the response would be to the, to the neighbors who are in that area next to the Catholic Medical Center where there's commercial uh, limited property adjacent to residential zones. But those are pretty big parcels and um, I, I have a feeling that that, that, that's not going to be an issue in those locations. Those are pretty big parcels and I think that they're um, likely to be easily developed to mitigate any uh noise or interference issues, so. Um, but I am uh concerned about, you know, the, the commercial neighborhood parcels that have um, you know, more dense residential area around them. Um, and given the feedback that we've heard uh tonight, um, and given the opportunity for any future developer to come and go through this process again um, to do a text amendment, uh, if they really were chomping at the bit for it, a drive-through in one of those commercial neighborhood parcels, which are very few in number. Or if they wanted to do a text amendment that would allow a drive-through service uh without the potential of having a noisy speaker uh system, uh, similar to what we've seen develop at the coffee shop. Um, you know, all those are options. And probably not incredibly difficult options to um exercise here in the booming metropolis of West Richland. So I, I think I'm coming down in favor of Richard, of Richard's um, of Richard's proposed amendment to the, to the action and um, that's all I have for this moment. No, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilman Smart. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I would like to second Councilman Brink's motion to move forward on a vote on this issue.
Okay. So, uh, let's see, uh, Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Yes, uh, real quickly, I would just like to say that I did read through the email attachment that was sent and looked looks as if Mrs. Cobb was saying that her name, uh, Margie Go, I apologize if I mispronounce it, Gorig, uh, is a direct adjacent resident to the commercial neighborhood uh that is at uh Bombing Range and Kennedy. So there's at least one person uh that it seems as if is not in favor of the commercial neighborhood having this. I, I think that in the end, we don't have anybody requesting at this moment for commercial neighborhood. It's not going to cause anybody any extra time at this moment to have uh this go through for commercial neighborhood. So I think it's probably best to do it as, I understand, uh, Mr. Menon Hall, the, the want to get things as similar as possible so that there's not all of these different little bits and codes. I absolutely understand that, but with this I know with the history, it just seems like for now this is the best thing to do and with the way that sometimes it's so difficult to know when things are happening. I, I keep thinking of the Vogons with the Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy where you have to go into the basement, into this other area, into this tiny little pocket with a flashlight in order to see the thing that's going to happen possibly. Um, I think right now this is the best, but if we see somebody that would like to do a drive-through on neighborhood commercial, then we can look at that at that time. That's all I got. Thank you.
You mean neighborhood commercial. Okay, gotcha. All right, following it. Uh, Stephanie has a clarification. I'm gonna run it by real quick just to see if I, if I've got this right. So uh, Councilman Bloom has made a motion that is left out, and his motion left out neighborhood commercial. Uh, Councilman Bloom, uh, you would also have to, uh, in your motion uh amend the ordinance to remove neighborhood commercial. Uh, and uh, so if you would like to uh make that amended motion with the correction of the uh ordinance, I will allow you to do so at this time and then we'll move forward with a vote.
So I would correct, uh, my motion is accurate. What you're asking for me is to add to the motion to amend the ordinance. And I'm trying to get to the ordinance.
To amend the ordinance, removing commercial, neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial. I'm looking at oh, to, to remove the, the neighborhood commercial C on table. Let me get back to the right one. It would be in section one uh seventeen thirteen point oh three oh, commercial land use.
Stephanie, is that the correction I was looking for? Eric, you might comment as well?
Uh, yeah, so basically that's, the motion was just to um omit that, but uh you're adopting the ordinance itself, so you'll have to amend the language within the ordinance um to reflect what you're, the changes you're attempting to make. So I think with your um amended motion, uh, that accomplishes that.
Okay.
That addresses the chapters that are mentioned?
Uh, I don't think the verbiage, the chapters just refer back to the, to the table. Is that not correct? It's from Menon, Menon Hall?
No, it, it does actually in section two of one seven point four zero zero seven zero have that in G.
Can I, can I make maybe a suggested motion, Mr. Bloom? And you could say so moved? So it's a little easier for, for the process maybe. Um, that you would like to amend your motion to change section one in the land use matrix table to remove uh neighborhood commercial as a conditional use permit and to strike section two, which are the performance standards for neighborhood commercial.
Correct. And so amend my motion.
All of section.
Say so, say, say so moved.
Will it do with section two?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, let's one at a time have, let's one at a time talk. I see, Eric, you, you made your correction. Councilman Stoker, you had a comment?
Yes, it's actually all of G under section two of seventeen dot forty dot oh seven zero. Cause that discusses all of the drive-through service windows with restaurants under conditional use.
That's why I suggested removing the entire section two. Is it, section two is just for neighborhood commercial. So if we take the entire section two out, that removes that. And then section three would now become section two within the last, in the final order.
Okay, for, for clarification, Mr. Menon Hall, would you please make, would you please revise the motion and Councilman Bloom, if you're agreeance at that, please uh
say so moved.
So, so moved, yeah, there you go. So we can move on.
So the recommended emotion again is that you amend section one and make the, and remove restaurants with drive-throughs allowed as a conditional use permit from the neighborhood commercial or commercial neighborhood. And remove section two. Remove section two in its entirety.
Yes, that is exactly correct.
So so moved.
So moved.
Yes, I I second my I'm again.
Okay, very good. Uh Councilman Stoker, I saw your hand ups that old one.
Well, I'm just concerned about removing all of section two. I thought the blue font area is what we're adding to section two. Is that not correct?
We're we're just not making change to say.
Councilman Bloom, let Eric respond to that, please.
So section two addresses neighborhood commercial use. What you're doing is you're removing that entire section out of the ordinance. It's not going to be there anymore. It's not changing the code for. Seventeen forty oh seven oh, it's just not including section two that's in the ordinance right now. In the ordinance that you're going to approve, I'm assuming here in a moment. So section three will move up and become section two.
Does that clarify a question, Councilman Stoker?
Well, I'm just hoping then that in our. West Richmond municipal code seventeen dot oh four dot oh seven zero is still there, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Because there's no section that's removing that in our in the proposed ordinance.
Okay, very good. We had um amended motion and a second and with that. Uh all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, counsel. Uh moving on to unfinished business, we have none. Uh we do not have any new business as well. And this is the opportune time for the second citizen public comment period. If you'd like to address counsel, please raise your hand and it'll be recognized. I see no one. Yeah, we've got another one, okay? And uh Stephanie, remind me of whom I'm speaking with.
Uh that's uh Mrs. Diana Cobb.
Okay, go ahead and unmute and again, name and. Place of residence, just the city's fine.
Diana Elizabeth Cobb. Um forty three twenty Kennedy Road. I'm right next door to Margie. Going boring. Um I'm a little perplexed and I'm a little miffed. At the fact that your uh city clerk did not send. My email and my five page document explaining or giving as short a. Uh history as I could with the limited amount of time. I I was given because of not being notified. Nonetheless, I did get that yesterday. By uh three thirty and one of you council people just said that you just looked at it this morning. Well, I'm a little, you know, I'm feeling as if. It's falling on deaf ears, the harm that this is going to happen to a lot of my neighbors that are seniors. And um we're all affected. We've had a little, we've had problems from. Uh drive through windows coming from uh. Uh McDonald's throwing garbage, crime, racing and um.
Car accidents.
Car accidents and litter. So it's like. None of you really want to take responsibility for how this is going to affect us. And I know that I only have three minutes, but I'm very disappointed in you councilmen, especially the mayor. Because you're not listening. This is going to affect us in a drastic way. For others that are going to capitalize monetarily to get this off the ground. Isn't that right, Mr. Brink? All of you don't want anything taken out because you want an open door to slide it under the carpet.
Then doing it the right way.
And then doing it the right way. You need to pay attention to your constituency. You know, you're elected. Mayor's elected, but you can also be replaced because I'm an activist.
Okay, thank you.
I am the widow, I am the widow of a Vietnam veteran and um. I'm pretty legally oriented. It's not going to stop here. Um if this comes down and there's a drive through window restaurant with everything that's going to escalate. Then I will go further. There are other um. No, there are other political bodies that my complaint will go to.
Thank you for your comments. Much appreciated. And then uh Eric did send all of the city council members. Uh your uh five page document. Uh there uh it by way of attachment. Uh so the council did receive your comments and uh that that is very important that we do that. And if the council member uh missed the attachment, I'm sure they could only apologize and have read it during this entire conversation. Was taken probably better part of an hour. Uh and a good discussion, counsel, in regards to uh. Uh this particular item. Uh and uh with that, we will uh go ahead and move on. This evening's agenda with uh staff uh reports. If any staff members have a staff report, please raise your hand. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um so I just wanted to address the comments that were just made. I don't know that they understood what just happened at that decision. So. Uh council just approved. Drive through restaurants only in the commercial limited. They did not approve it. They withdrew that off of the ordinance. So it's not going to be approved in the commercial neighborhood in your area. So that's what just happened. That's just went down. Um so I just hope that clarifies and helps you. Understand what action council just took is that they approved the restaurants with drive through only in the commercial limited. Which there isn't commercial limited in your vicinity. It's down the street um next to the uh. Well, next to. The budget blinds place and the car wash in that area and then over by the the medical building. So. You in your neighborhood, they would pull that off the ordinance and made it so it wasn't allowed. So I hope that clarifies what just happened and what just went down. Um with the council on the action tonight. So they did listen to you. They heard you loud and clear. They pulled that off and and voted against. Having it in the commercial neighborhood.
Thank you for the clarification, Eric. Much appreciated. Uh commit uh Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor. Um just one thing tonight. Congratulate Julie West, our CIP manager and our funding partner, Benton County. On the rural county uh capital funds, the signal's operational at South Thirty Eighth and Van Geeson. So if you're driving through there, uh please pay attention to it. Uh it's already getting quite a fanfare on uh social media. People are enjoying it. They can take left turn safely and actually cross the street. So just FYI and glad to have that. Uh operational today.
Thank you, Roscoe. Uh I see HR Director Selena Smathers.
Hello. So I just wanted to give some uh good news today is. There is an annual award called the Well City Award that we did win again this year. Well, I should say earned because it's not something you win. Monetarily, it does help a little bit. It saves the city about twenty thousand dollars in medical premiums. But what's really good about it is this is a program that really forces us to get together as teams. Um have some fun times, um do healthy things. For example, one of our engineers, Jacqueline Phillips, uh last couple years, she's been heading up a six week challenge. And so she really gets all the staff involved. We compete against each other's departments. Uh we all basically have some sort of goal that we want to achieve, whether it's lose ten pounds, run a three K, whatever it is. And then over the six weeks, she tracks our progress and whichever department. Um ends up having the most people fulfill their goals, that department wins some sort of prize. And obviously with COVID, we had a very hard time getting people together. So it was really hard last year to have enough wellness activities to. Achieve the award. So it was very nice that we had all the help from all the departments. And all of our staff really getting together and working for this. And I'd really like to thank the police department because right now they're putting together. Um a gym uh that was originally obviously just for the officers to work out in, but they would have been nice enough. That now the rest of the city staff can go work out in that gym. And we're really excited to um open that up very soon for everyone. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone for all their participation in the past year. We look forward to this next year as well.
Hey, thank you, Selena. Much appreciated. Other staff members, councils, reports, comments this evening. Raise your hand. We'll recognize you. Councilman Bloom?
Well, um the Ben Franklin Transit Board met and elected a new transit chair. And that will be Will McKay, but they elected me as Transit Board Vice Chair. Uh I will be traveling back to DC next, well, I guess in a couple of weeks to go to a. App app uh American Public Transportation Association Conference on uh. Legislative issues. Uh it's usually a uh. A presentation by a whole bunch of Democratic senators and representatives who. Uh congratulate themselves for sending us a whole bunch of money, which they have sent a butt 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 load of money. And uh I didn't ask the question of whether the uh BF COG is going to get more three oh three. Uh more money from FTA under all those other programs. But uh and I will be representative to the BF COG for. Uh uh Ben Franklin Transit uh for the interim. Until we get a new general manager, which uh is out being advertised now. Thank you.
But and one clarification of Councilman Bloom's, it it was a busload of money.
I think it was more a truckload. I mean.
Okay. Playing on words with you there. Okay, uh Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. Um I would definitely like to give kudos first to. Bloom for um the motion that was made for the one motion that we had today for the ordinance change. Thank you for that. Thank you for attending to that. Um and thank you, Mrs. Cobb, for the email. I apologize. That is a misunderstanding because although it was attached to the email, I did not realize that that was attached to that email. But I did read through it as the happening. So thank you for sending that. Please, please, please continue to stay involved. We had a Ben Franklin Council of Governments meeting on the eighteenth of last month. Uh there was no. Economic Development District meeting. The consented or the agenda we uh. Approved step uh some tip updates, transportation implement plan updates. Uh there is a bike map. That the BF staff is going to be working on. They are seeking input as to what should be highlighted on that. And there is also the. Human Services Transportation Plan that is happening and it's a federally required document that. Coordinated planning between agencies. This developed every four years. And so that we can receive funding for statewide competitive consolidated grants program. It's due to be updated by December first. Uh they just had the identification of members for the HSTP Committee. Uh the hold meeting is happening this week. There's going to be community outreach happening from March seventh to thirteenth and going all the way until. Uh December thirty first, where they are going to be listing the projects and the ranking, which is actually due December or I'm sorry, January. Twenty third. Uh there is also Regional Traffic Count Program uh that got updated. And there is a twenty twenty two Washington Walkability Mobility Action Institute. That BF COG was able to get. That is happening tomorrow through the fifth. So they will receive that training and then be able to disseminate that information out to members such as the city of West Richland. Uh there is a increase to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds. A ten percent increase to that for the BF COG region. So that hopefully is good news to Councilmember Bloom. And anybody else that is concerned, surface transportation block grants. And uh other than that, there were new elections for BF COG Board. The new chair of BF COG is of the board is Commissioner Brad Peck. Of County and the new vice chair or the vice president is council. Sorry, Port Commissioner Skip Novakovich, who was our past chair. And we are going to have to change some of our bylaws because the past chair normally is a member of the executive board. Seeing as the past chair was a vice chair, we had to make an appointment to someone to meet that position. And that was the person that was originally from the nominating committee uh. Recommended to be the vice chair and that is Councilmember Ryan Luxon from Richland City. And that is all I got.
The clarification, who's the vice chair then? Is it Ryan or is it Skip?
No, the the vice chair is Skip, uh but Ryan is a new member of the executive board since.
It's a vice.
Port Commissioner Novakovich. Yes, yes.
Anything, anything new going on with Port of Kennewick?
Uh Port of Kennewick, they uh. They are doing a lot of discussions about what is happening at the Vista Fields area and. There's just a lot of discussion right now that's going on. There's a lot of citizen comment coming in. There's a lot of just what they would like to plan for that. Uh shoot, those notes are elsewhere. I am. I apologize to that. I will bring them to the next meeting though.
Uh new new commission.
There was nothing diff.
Very, okay.
Yes, uh there was nothing definitive at the last meeting for Kennewick, but I will bring those notes to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
No worries.
Okay. Uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um the only thing I want. To bring to my fellow council members' attention uh is a email legislative update that came from the Association of Washington Cities. It appears that over the weekend. Uh the Chair of the House Transportation Committee uh with the uh with the state of Washington. Announced a plan to replace a deficit in their fuel tax with sweeping money out of the Public Works Assistance Account. That is a uh a low interest loan for infrastructure improvement.
You froze up, Councilman.
Men's and their plan was to take a hundred million.
So Councilmember or uh Mayor Pro Tim Brink, you're freezing up. You want to drop your video? I think Kate got all your bandwidth.
All right, hang on one second.
Okay.
So AWC has urged everyone to contact their local representatives uh because.
Lost you again.
Is a number of our local cities and I believe even West Richmond. Um I'll tell you what, Mr. May, why don't you come back to me? It's not pressing.
Okay, very good. Uh we'll come back to you. Uh you you get the get the get the other member of the household. Off the internet, right? Councilmember Smart?
Uh yeah, uh Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. Um I had just a couple of comments quickly. I'll just reiterate. Kate's kudos to Richard for making that amendment. I appreciate that that it made a lot of sense to me. I also just wanted to thank uh Ms. Cobb for her efforts and writing to us. Um putting down all of her thoughts and coming and presenting them. Um and like Mr. Mendenhall indicated. Uh you did make a difference. You helped support a change in the ordinance that we were otherwise looking to um. Put forward and approve. So now the commercial neighborhood zones parcels. Still do not allow a uh drive through restaurant. So. So that's a, I think it's a great example of um, you know, uh council members being diligent and uh. Community members participating uh to really make our community the way we want it. I would make one other comment on that issue, which is um I have been a part of this. I have been a part of this council long enough where we have, uh, I've seen the council vote. To change uh, zones. Uh, that are adjacent to uh, or even that include uh, residential parcels. Um, specifically like the downtown mixed-use zone. And I've seen those changes. Get made without the requirement to notify even the people that are, that own the property. Uh, let alone the folks that are adjacent. And I think that that this is a great example tonight of a reason why that. That ordinance on notification needs to be looked at. I mean, even though there's not an applicant to put a restaurant with a drive-through in today. Uh, changing zoning to allow it in the future, even under conditional use. Has impact on people's future enjoyment of their property. So maybe we need to review that uh, as a, as a subcommittee. Or find out if there's a way that we can make sure that, that any action we take that might affect the. The, the ability of our residents to enjoy their property. Now or in the future uh, is, is, is that, that they're notified of that action. Um, so I think it's something we need to discuss. I just want to put that out there as an item to put on our agenda. And and lastly, um. We made a motion today in the consent agenda concerning access to parks for um, animals and dogs. And it's maybe coincidental, maybe not, but I had a, 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 a member of uh. A citizen of West Richland come to me this last week and make the suggestion. Um, that I'll just throw out there and then we can discuss it more with Parks Committee or something, but. The suggestion was that the north end of the Bonding Range Sports Complex. Uh, might make a good place for a. Dog park, a little mini dog park, a place where if you put up a three or four-foot fence. Um, you could have a section along that north of boundary uh, that doesn't get used a lot perhaps, or maybe it does. I don't know. But anyway, just, it was a suggestion I'll throw out there. It's, it's a little bit relevant because we just took an action tonight to. To help that situation of, of, of dogs uh, using the parks inappropriately, people not managing that properly. And that was just a suggestion that we'll have talked about more, see if that's a possibility or if that would make sense to uh. Fence off a small section of the north end of Bonding Range Park for a place for dogs to run. That's all I had tonight. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Stoker.
Yes, so um, maybe everybody knows already, yesterday, I believe, the governor had announced that there's been a change in the date where the mask mandate. Uh. Relinquished, I guess. That's March twelfth now, so a week from this Saturday. I was just wondering, uh, we've been looking to how we're going to address that and what we're going to do going forward.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Stoker. And uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, you got a few more bandwidths there?
I think so, Mr. Mayor. How?
Nice try, sir.
What's the audio now? Just a try, is it still breaking up?
Uh, go and give it one more shot.
All right. Um, I was just commenting on the uh, um. Act.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink, we lost you again.
Action by the uh, House Transportation Chair. Um.
I will be, let me, I, I think I can probably say that one for you. AWC uh, i- is opposed to the uh, the direction. In which the, the legislative bodies moving to take Public Works Trust Fund monies. Uh. And I, I think Roscoe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on you to explain this a little bit more. We've had some in-depth conversation and some of the. Some of the pluses and minuses that go along with it. It's kind of a slippery slope for us right now, but Roscoe.
So yeah, I've been attending some early morning Zoom meetings and getting texts uh, and phone calls from uh, Benton RA's lobbyist. So uh. Uh, Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Brink is spot on. Over the weekend. There was a Seattle Times article dealing with Representative uh, Phi and the state's sixteen billion dollar transportation budget. And what was in that was that they uh. The Democratic leadership was having a change in, including in the transportation package. Uh, an export tax on fuel. So fuel that was exported out of Washington, they were trying to add a export tax to it. To tax fuel that was going to Oregon or Idaho or, or Alaska. Lot of debate on whether that was even legal. Would there be retaliatory things? Um, and so that was dropped out of the transportation package. Um. Which left a two billion dollar hole in their sixteen-year or sixteen billion dollar transportation package. And this is, this has backfilling of some connecting Washington projects. Again, we have the SR two-two four Red Mountain Transportation Project. Um, we're not getting any extra money, but it kind of sets a precedent to uh, the state putting backfill money into that to. Meet those commitments from that, from all the connecting Washington projects. So um, and to, to fill the gap. Uh, what the uh, House Transportation Chair was recommending was doing a hundred million dollar a year. Transfer out of the Public Works Trust Fund account. Uh, over the next fifteen years. And basically that would um. I don't think there'll be a program and Public Works Trust Fund, the city has used it over the last twenty years. To fund water and sewer infrastructure projects. Um, it, it's a low-interest program. It's actually something that's uh, other states are envious. When we go to conferences. Uh, other state Public Works Directors are pretty envious of this model the state had. And if you recall, back in twenty twelve, uh, we had uh. Well Eleven and our Brotherhood Reservoir selected for Public Works Trust Fund money, about five million dollars. And back then, the state saw a big pot of money. And had the McCleary decision on education and decided they were going to do a one-time transfer. In twenty thirteen, well, that took and killed all those projects, included ours. And had, and to fund those projects, we actually had to go through the state's drinking water program. Which is highly competitive, but we were selected. Uh, the bad news is going from state money to federal money. Uh, that, that project was nearly, cost us nearly seven million dollars to come, to complete. So. Uh, it definitely has an impact. Um, I, I spoke up at a, I attend several of these early morning Zoom meetings with. Um. Washington Highway User Federation and uh. Keep Washington Rolling Groups. These are transportation groups. They are heavily, there's lobbyists. Uh, there's the different industries are representative. So you get the uh, labor unions. You've got several transportation. Uh, AWC is there, the associated counties. So you get a wide variety and I just happened to be on a seven-day Monday morning emergency Zoom meeting. And I was the only local agency there. So I spoke up and just told them that, what that impact could be on it. And. Um, we're, we're very blessed that Benton RA allows us access to their lobbyist, Pat Dunn. And so he's been keeping us abreast. And actually, he was texting me during the council meeting tonight that it's actually on the floor being debated now and receiving heavily, heavy, heavy support. So um, they're going to have to come up with something else. The transportation package is important. But you don't need to take, you know, typically water and sewer money. Uh, to fix transportation. Now you got a water and sewer uh, funding, infrastructure funding issue. So I think uh, AWC's message that went out. Was well received. Um, and the, the last one I heard was there's a. It's, I may, may know it. It's the, some business association that it's associated with the local chambers across the state also. Uh, we're against uh, that. So stay tuned. Uh, the caveat is, is we need, the state needs a transportation. Uh, package. There's preservation money. There's other things that funds culverts. And so the. While there's concern about them sweeping it, we need these bills to pass. And then they can, the House and the Senate can debate it and decide what the final look is. But if this derails the whole effort. Cause the session ends, I think, next week. If they can't get the bills passed and get this going and then negotiate it out, we could end up with no transportation package, which I think would be, again, devastating to have another. Year to kick the can down the road. So there's a lot of people behind the scenes looking into this and trying to figure. You know, that out. Um, can there be the general fund, the state's general fund as a uh, billions of dollars that are sitting there? And so they're looking at, can that? Can you transfer some of that in rather than uh, the Public Works Trust Fund? So. Long story there, but we're, we're, we're on top of it. Yeah, Mayor Tom Brink, thank you for bringing attention, but we, we. Busy weekend, trying to stay up on this stuff and that was an important one.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Roscoe. Um, I, I did uh, uh, speak with Representative Banky today. He's against it. Haven't heard from Representative Clipper yet, but uh, this is a, this is a big deal. So I'd encourage you. Uh, my fellow council members to contact um, your representatives, Banky and Clipper, and let them know. The impact this might have to the city. Oh, I have, sir.
Yeah, so just to be clear, the, that we support the transportation bills, just not the backfilling of Public Works Trust Fund. To, to, for the sixteen billion.
Yeah, yeah. We want to make sure we get a transportation bill passed. Uh, but not, like Roscoe said, not in supportive at the cost of Public Works Trust Fund. Uh, so yeah, the, the, if the pass it with it, Public Works Trust Fund, they could still go in and negotiate and move it around and, and get things taken care of. And make sure that we get our money that we need for our SR two-twenty-four project. You know, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword. You know, you complain about one thing and it stand in support of it and then you end up messing yourself up. If you're victorious, you know, victorious. So yeah, touchy, touchy subject over there right now. So, but thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. I'm sorry that you weren't able to uh, speak to it, but. I mean, I got probably the best mouthpiece out there for that. And Roscoe, you did a great job at, at covering it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir. Uh, Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, um, I know a lot's going on here locally and I've been involved with it and supporting it. Um, I would just like to um, do a shout out and. To globally what's going on in Ukraine. And I'd like to send um, love and prayers from West Richland. And to have them stay strong and hope that America stands by them. With love, support and supplies to get them through this war with Russia. So. I just want to put it out there. I think that, that this is so global and what's happening and, and it's so, everybody's uncertain on. How the outcome's going to be. So I think a lot of prayers are needed. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Kate, you ever hand up again?
Yes, yes, I do. Yes, I, I definitely would like to echo exactly what Councilmember Hayes said. Um. There's a lot going on in Ukraine and I hope that they know that. At least I support them. Councilmember Hayes supports them and I'm sure that others of us probably do as well. Um, and I would also like to mention something and thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink for mentioning it. But there are some legislation items that are coming up. And first, there is the last AWC. Legislative action call, the city action call that's happening this Friday at twelve thirty. In that email from AWC, it does have more information and a link to that Zoom call so that you can know more about what's going. Going on at the last bits of it. And there are two. Bits of legislation that I'm sure that Chief Majetic is very interested in. And that is Senate Bill SB five-nine-one-nine. It's currently waiting a vote on the House floor. And it's regarding how law enforcement officers may engage in a pursuit. Uh, so please. Take a moment to look at that. And the other one is, there is a last-minute amendment that is fairly problematic. That was added to House Bill HB two-zero-three-seven. And that is in regards to use of force. Uh, AWC explains what the problematic language is in their. Message that they sent out about that. So please just make sure we're paying attention. Legislative session has almost ended, but there's still a lot going on. And there's a lot that likes to get crammed in at the last minute. So I recommend if you do have the time this Friday at twelve thirty, attending the. The final city action call that AWC lobbyists are putting out at twelve thirty this Friday. And uh, thank. You, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink for mentioning that.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so we've had staff, we've had council. So uh, this is the time we're going to go ahead and move on to our executive session. Uh, so we'll adjourn into that for RCW forty-two thirty-one ten C, which uh. The potential real estate minimum price discussion. And then uh, also the RCW forty-two thirty-one ten I to discuss uh. Legal litigation that the city is party to. I would say probably thirty minutes, uh, that twenty minutes will get us uh. Uh, to our end with no action to follow this evening. Uh, so with that. We'll adjourn into executive session. We'll give Stephanie a few to ask the public or let the public go for the evening.